Okay. Certainly, I appreciate it. Guys coming down and having a discussion with us, but we are just trying to work with you and see if we can do something here about getting some help and certainly want to hear from you and what it would take to give some serious discussions and what we need to do if we try and work with you guys, see what we can. I'll leave it up to you guys. Go ahead and start. If you've got something else, we can ask some questions and Lewis has got a lot of questions he wants to ask.
Yeah, I think we-
Let me sort out with some perspective here. I know when I talked to you, you had an 12-inch line on Dixie Line Road. Don't know anything about your hydraulics, pressures, or anything like that, but in that, on that Google Earth I printed out this morning, it shows that we have, where the Artesian vault is, is near the Delaware line on 281, what do you call that, Baltimore Pike or whatever. Okay, I marked it there. Everything from that point to our reservoir, we own 16-inch duck one hour line, our transmission line, to that reservoir. What we're probably looking at is to tie into your line on Dixie Line Road, assuming that that's possible, and going up with these secure rates of way with the state highway, and then tie in above the vault, because the vault's owned by Artesian, but the line's owned by us, so we can come into that way. We'll have our engineer talk to you and all that about how we can do that. And of course, there's a lot of steps involved in doing an analysis as to where that is, but I don't know exactly on Dixie Line Road where you have a line. One thing I wanted to make clear is, we're not interested in the agreement with, what's the name, Tempe Ridge? We're not interested in going through that development to tie into muddy lane-
Okay.
-for the supply, because the supply won't do us good there. We need to have the supply go to our reservoir. As it exists right now, the Artesian line actually feeds through their meter to our reservoir, and that's our main distribution point. We would have problems, head pressure problems, hydraulic, all kinds of issues if we tied into muddy lane. Once we get it to our reservoir, then we're all right. That's what I'm making sure that you understood that's the problem we're looking at.
We also got to, too, that we have the meter there, and we also have the line already gone up to our reservoir, so the line-
The meter is Artesian's vault and everything.
The vault there, but we have a vault, and the line's going right up to our reservoir right now, so it's been-
And we have a separate meter at our reservoir, so we can monitor it remotely in the line.
Who owns the line before the meter?
Artesian, everything up to the vault.
The line is the meter.
Yeah.
From the meter, it sounds like to the state line, and by Artesian.
That's Artesian back. When we entered into an agreement with them, we paid for half the cost of easements for Delmarva, Pico, and we paid for half the construction costs, the capital improvements for theirs on their side and in Maryland. Of course, they've since become Artesian Water Maryland, regulated utility in our state, so that's why we're purchasing from them, actually, rather than through Delaware, even though they're groundwater in Delaware. Now, in your case, you're not regulated in Maryland, so the point of sale to us would be in Delaware for you, and you can be selling to us. And I assume it's under that tariff for sale, for lease, I mean, sale for resale tariff you had given me, that's how we would be regulated?
I would think that would be the rate structure here. Did you have the rate from the settlement? Yeah.
3.02?
No, actually, it's 2.99997.
It's less than $3.
Okay, 2.99, five decimal places.
Earl Shy, the Earl Shy is special. 2.9994 per thousand gallons.
Okay.
Assuming that the settlement was finalized, that's a rate.
Because I saw your tariff, so I pretty pointed to the civil-
Yeah, those were temporary rates, so we'll factor until we finalize the case.
Okay, I understood that.
Now, would you be looking for a regular supply of water?
Well, it's up to the board. The board's, well, I won't speak for the board, but I'll just say what I heard the board say. We currently have an agreement with Artesian that supply up to 1.5 million gallons of water. Our agreement with Artesian expires in July of 2014, so we're looking as an option to purchase water from other sources also. It's the board's decision whether they want to proceed with buying that 1.5 million plus or what's available from your system. I don't know. That's one of the purposes of me, we need to know what's available to us in your system.
I'm just unclear, are you actually paying for one of the lines we have there from Artesian, or is it just like in the-
We have, we're taking routinely approximately 250,000 gallons a day, and, but under contract, we're supposed to take 375. And Mary called, buying Taylor, cut into the conversation with hers, it was all cheap, and under their approval allows us to take 250. So we're actually taking under what the contract amount. But we can take larger amounts, all we do is, several train operates our system, actually operates our plant, and they call their operations, people may have to make adjustments, and we'll have to pull higher amounts. Here, lady, with the high turbidity roll, what are we experiencing? We're taking pretty close to 400,000 gallons a day for short duration.
The original agreement was strictly for a backup to our water treatment plant, which has capacity average daily of 1.5 and two days. And the state required to be have a backup to our largest source of water, which was the surface water treatment plant. So it was sort of an insurance policy, and there was tiered required purchases, that if we went beyond a certain level and triggered, take or pay, and then there's, it's tiered that stepped up, depending on how much we had to request.
And as a clarification to that, one of the permanent requirements with the town operates our treatment plant, it's source worth, Big Elk Creek. And we monitor the USGS site in Elk Mills for flow rates to the Big Elk Creek. When the flow rate drops below 11 cubic feet a second, we have to shut our plant down. And in September 2010, it got very, very close, consequently, we had to notify Artesian to take up to 1.5 million as a result. I kicked in that minimum take up to 275. Fortunately, it rained after that, so we actually didn't experience drawing down that water, because we had to pay their 4.068 cost for 1,000 gallons overpaying that. Does that include the transmission fee? 4.068 is-
Yeah, it does, yeah.
Do you know-
They get it from Chester Water, we're not actually using Chester Water Authority water, but the contract calls for the rate charged to Artesian by Chester Water Authority as a flow casing interconnect. That's our plus 20% transmission fee.
Oh.
They add to that, so that's where-
So it's whenever they're paying Chester Water plus 20%, that's what your rate ends up being?
Because we're set by contract rather than the tariff, so that's how we pay for water.
Special contract, but not necessarily one that's implied either in Maryland or the Delaware public service commission?
Well, it's approved by, I remember, the testimony given by Artesian recently under their request for a change of rate in Delaware, mentioned that, you know, when they miss all the-
Yeah.
They mentioned the contract, that there are contract amounts that are outside their tariff.
No, because it's a special-
So I don't think that there's ever been a legal issue about that, that I'm aware of. But obviously, we do purchase from United, from the Artesian Water Maryland, and it's regulated in this state. I don't think there's ever been an issue about the contract amount.
Oh, yeah. So your interest is in displacing that agreement, then? I misunderstood. I thought you were looking to keep that agreement, but you were looking to us for future-
It's not my decision, it's the board's decision.
Yeah.
But they just wanted, we don't want to put our eggs in one basket, so to speak.
Right.
So I'm not exactly sure if the board ultimately will decide to get notice to Artesian, to let that agreement expire, or whether, and is the plant that with the United Water System.
Well, the thing is, I need to know, too, if you can really supply us with the amount of water we need, and if you can supply that, then of course, the board will decide whether we would either cut ties with Artesian, because I don't want to cut ourselves off, whether we don't have any real supply or future backup, and I think you guys can supply the money and bring some people out of the money to water to-
Is that you, Buzz?
Good morning.
Buzz?
Buzz? Missed the whole thing, buddy.
There he is.
Are we able to carry that?
I don't think it will reach over by the-
Chairs.
We can video.
Oh, that's great. You mean the lecture?
Like, I'm sorry. Are you there, Buzz?
I am.
Okay, I'm sorry, I couldn't get you on your cell phone. I think I wrote your number incorrectly, but we-
Did that one happen? I didn't have a phone, so I didn't remember all that.
Chair.
Yeah, no, and we left you on the conference connection, just in case you thought through that, so we have started the meeting, but I think if we just continue on from here, maybe you can catch up, and we can fill you in later on on what we've already discussed.
That's great. Sorry for the inter-
No, that was my fault. I should have written the number right.
Want a recap? I could recap.
Yeah, that would be helpful.
Buzz, Louis George with the Town of Elton talking, can you hear me?
Yes, I can.
Okay, just a brief recap. The town has asked United Water Delaware to come over and speak to us about the possibility of supplying water to the Town of Elton. We currently have an agreement with Artesian Water Maryland that expires in 2014 that provides up to 1.5 million gallons a day. Should we need that amount, we don't need it at this point in time, but it backs up our surface water treatment plant. The board is concerned about the cost of water we purchase from Artesian, so we're looking into a competitive environment, let's put it that way. Look at United Water to see if it will be of cost savings to the town to buy water, not only to back up the surface water treatment plant, but for future growth also. I've explained to, of course, Nancy about where we have our transmission line on Maryland 281 at the Delaware line, and I know that you have a line on Dixie Line Road, so theoretically, we could connect from Dixie Line Road to our line on 281 to supply our reservoir, which is the source, our main source of water for the town, that's where we want to pump this water. But we don't know what that involves from an engineering standpoint, whether it needs a booster station or what's involved, but preliminarily, that's how we're looking at a closest connect point between the town system and the United Water Delaware system. So, I don't know, did I miss anything else? That's basically, in a nutshell, what we're looking at here.
Got you. Thank you very much.
Just a couple of questions. How far is the, you said the Artesian vault, the main from the Artesian vault to the state line was actually meant by Artesian?
The, actually, what happens, they have a 20-inch line that runs down the, from their Rose Tree Hunt development, down through short Delmarva easement into a Pico energy easement that comes down and crosses 281 in Maryland, and ties into the vault across the road. The vault there, of course, they use, they have a solar power telemetry system there, so they can read remotely and all that. And then, that's where they connect to our 16-inch line, of course, check valves and all that stuff's in there. And that's where they deal with, so they actually, I don't, I don't think it's too far down the Delaware line from that point where that's located, of course, obviously, the Maryland State Highway Administration would own rights of way, I don't know how wide it is, but we're within the state highway right of way, our entire line from that point on, and I think their vault's in the state highway right of way, too. And I know the right of way would extend to the Delaware line, but I'm not, I guess Newcastle County probably on Dixie Line Road, or-
Louis, was there to ask, is the assumption that the water quality or whatever is not an issue here, this is simply the price and who the provider is?
That's true. Water quality and the quantity of water available to the town will meet our needs for backup water supply, and I think that Artesian, I'm pretty sure Artesian will supply our future needs. So it's basically a price issue, what's the best for the citizens of Elton and the business community in terms of purchasing water. So we'd have to look at that, and since the 16-inch line's already in place and paid for, basically, would just be our capital cost, or how we would work that out with United Water Delaware to connect, and what procedure would be in place to do that. Now, you would have to sell us water in Delaware, and of course, they can connect over, so, because you're not regulated in Maryland.
Okay, so price is the answer, it's not a water quality, they certainly can provide you what you need?
Yes.
But you're also looking for this to be more of a standby connection, or maybe with, you said right now, not right now, but on average, 15 gallons a day, but the balance of it would be more like an as need in the moment?
We would, we need to have, what, 1.5 million? We need to have at least 1.5 million as a backup for our water treatment plant, so what we would do is, we need to have a greater amount in order, let's say, for the sake of discussion, 1.75 million gallons a day available to us, because we have some development, actually, right next to 281, that's going to build 500 and so on, so they need about 150,000 gallons a day when they're built out. So we would use water from that source to supply these people also, and we can't reduce our backup supply, so it's a growth one. Now, we know, we're pretty sure that if this comes to reality, that we'll need to amend our Cecil County Master Water and Sewer Plan or accommodate for another water source in Maryland, but we would handle that.
We're down 4.5 right, and then-
Right. We could come down Dixie Line Road, tie with the line down here on the southern portion, it's definitely an 8-inch line.
Yeah, I didn't have-
You know, for some reason, I can hear Louis, but I'm having trouble hearing the rest of the conversation.
That was Ted. Ted speaking too loud.
Ted is whispering over here.
There's a soft spoken.
Oh, okay, all right.
I just ask the question, Buzz, this is Susan, I just ask the question, how far down Dixie Line Road our line comes towards the connection? And we have an 8-inch line that comes down Dixie Line Road, it's 12 for a while, and then it crops down to 8-inch.
Right. It's 12 to where it comes down to Tempe Chase, then reduces down to 8-inch after that. Now, we do have a 16 and a 12-inch line coming down Old Baltimore Pike from the ease, that would probably really be the, where the majority of the water would come from.
Okay, so you extend it on that route?
Yeah, that's where we would probably make an extension from.
Where do you end on Old Baltimore Pike?
Really, that line ends at the entrance to the airborne woods, they'll put smart there.
Right. And we have a 16-inch line, too, by the-
Yeah.
Yeah, our 16-inch line runs from the vault up to the reservoir, so that would be perfect almost, just tie right in.
How far is that? Down forward, that would be far close.
Less than a half a mile, I would say, three tenths of a mile, I think that's-
The, how does United Water Delaware, how would we work out the capital improvements here? How does that work with your system? Would we be obligated to pay all those capital improvements in your system, or share those costs, or easements, obviously?
Yeah, I was going to say, some of that would have to do with the terms of the agreement, you know, if we were to return all our investment, you know, what kind of minimum-
Would that be a requirement, a minimum take also?
Yeah, I would think so. If we were going to contribute, there would have to be some sort of guarantee that we could do.
Right. We'd have to take a look at the agreement, but typically, the cost of the extension would be borne by, you know, by the person that requires the extension, but if we have a minimum take-
And your minimum take would be predicated on your length of the agreement, and we're going to advertise that over the period of time for that agreement?
That would like to be factored in.
One of the issues we have, I think, with Artesian is that our agreement is, we're initially five years, and of course, five, five-year terms after that, but there's a clause in there that allows us to terminate with six months notice. Well, from the lawyer's standpoint, that's a five-year agreement, because any time you can terminate an agreement with an offer of term, then that's the most determined date, unless they accord it to be otherwise. So I know that they're probably taking pay for the towns probably high from their perspective, this 375, because they're finding their money back, too. I know they had to make quite a few improvements, but the advantage they have there is that their future plans involve beyond Elton-
Right.
-to serve Cecil County, that's why they came to regulate utilities here, so their costs can be capitalized over other users, too.
Oh, yeah.
We just happen to be the only user right now, so I see, and of course, they're another company, they live long-term, so sometime we'll get the money back, but to do a chunk of change for us to deal with right now. But I don't know, in our particular case, with United Water Delaware, I visualize it being, would just be a customer. So any improvements made in the system by you to serve us as a customer, that would be neat to us, single serving for us, so to speak, we would have to bear those costs, because it's not going to expand to other users out there.
Right.
And it's our responsibility to recover the costs from our users, our users. Okay, I'm going to get a handle on that.
Yeah, and I guess, are you also negotiating with Artesian on the five-year, or is that pretty fixed?
That's already done, that's already fixed.
So that's fixed for you?
Yeah. Well, it sticks for 2014.
Right.
It's a done deal.
Yeah, and then you know what the next five years, five years is for you, because you're a creator?
Yes. The only difference is that, obviously, we do, one of the issues, not issues, but one of the terms of the agreement is that if Chester Water Authority pays in for that rate, applies to us, and of course, I would do that for anybody.
Now, the water, I was curious, though, because you said it's based on the hookest and interconnection rate, but the water you're receiving is not from that interconnection rate?
No.
You're actually receiving-
Groundwater.
-groundwater from their wells in Delaware, right? Okay.
We had, we crossed that bridge a long time ago, but we're probably interested in the E.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, exactly, inter-wheeling water, yeah, okay.
Now, you have five interconnections with Artesian, too, for emergency purposes.
Emergency.
Okay, so you can only use them on emergencies, too?
And some of them aren't even-
We think of both ways.
Yeah.
Okay, I didn't know, because I saw that, I've read, I think, in your description of the assets of the company-
Right.
-how you do things, including that 75 million aquifer storage you have, which is a very good idea, and we have, we're running droughts, just like you, and you get from white clay and red and white clay creeks and small lake pond or something, whatever you call it correctly. So you're subject to drought issues, too, as a service plant.
And we also purchase water from Chester.
Okay, yeah, so-
And, you know, it's not uncommon for each of our utilities to be interconnected and to, you know, try to help each other in an emergency, so-
Sort of like the electric grid, same thing, you know? Something like that. Mayor, how do you, of course, I think we've answered a lot of questions there, ventured into the territory that's informative, but I guess the next step is to, how would we prepare an agreement to, or draft an agreement to consider? How would you, that come from you, or?
I guess we would have to take this information back and just absorb it and take a look at it and-
Think about it.
Yeah, we have to look at what the capital investments are going to be.
Right.
I mean, we don't have a set formula for agreements, I mean, every case is unique.
Okay.
But one of the things we talked about on the film, too, is if you're looking for something like 1.5 million gallons a day in reserve, in other words, we commit it to you, we can't obligate it to anybody else, there's going to have to be some consideration of compensation for reserving that water, because that means it's not available for us to sell to anybody else also.
Well, we don't want to just pick any inventory on the shelf we can't account for. I understand, from a business perspective, we kind of accept that.
Anything stemming to this, or is this the first time that was discussed?
Well, the city, we used to have an agreement with the city of Newark.
Oh, okay, but they got their own one now.
Right, that agreement has expired now, because they built their reservoir.
They had a minimum, you know, that they had, that they took each day, and I'm not quite sure, that agreement went back fairly years ago, and I don't know if at one point there was some capital required to get that agreement done, but they were taking 90 gallons a day from us.
But essentially, you would be talking about improvements from your connection on, is that Baltimore Pike?
Baltimore.
Up to the Delaware line. And one of the things that I don't know, and you may not know, I don't know what your pressure there is.
Ted could probably speak to what we've got down there.
Yeah, we have a hydraulic grade line of between 225 and 250 feet.
Okay.
So, basically, with that, I don't know, you know, what your elevation of your reservoir is, your reservoir?
I'm not sure if it's 121 feet or not, I'd have to look. I know that when the Artesian had to upgrade its stations in Delaware to meet that, because it's a certain amount of head pressure and everything, and I'll let the engineers figure all that out. We basically, we'd have to look at that, of course, if you had to put a booster station, that'd be a big cost, you know, when you put the booster station in, that's, I mean, you've got a right of way, and I assume you can get that from Delaware, which got to involve the station and electricity and all the fancy components that go with it.
Right.
And in addition, just laying pipe, so there's a lot more to it.
But your Red Hill reservoir, that's a finished water reservoir?
Yes.
Okay, yeah.
Is that covered, is it a tank, or?
It's two 900,000 gallon in-grade, in-ground reservoirs. They're built 1930, but we have pipe along liners and covers, so they're steel.
So that's where the water would flow into?
That's where we want our water. Our water, the reason we put it there is because there's a gravity line that feeds the main port of town, and also, we have a line that feeds our belt out on 279 I-95, and we have emergency power there for those booster stations, and it also supplies water to Washington Woods to a pump station there. So from that point, probably 1.8 million gallons, we can distribute it pretty much throughout the town, that's why we need it there. The issue of, that's why I wanted to clarify, the thing with Kenny Simmons and Tempe Ridge coming out of muddy lane wouldn't really satisfy our needs in terms of spreading that water out or streaming it out if we wanted to.
Yeah, I don't think, just, you know, off the top of my head, I don't think there would be any pumping that would be required to get the water into that-
Have you ever worked with KCI much? KCI Technologies? Okay, well, they're our engineer, and he, because they did all the work on the Artesian one, they would give you more intimate information about what involves on our side, and we just kind of want to find out if you're interested, and if you are interested, then we'll authorize him to contact you or you, I guess you're the one, right, Ted?
Yeah.
And Ryan Slickinger is somebody, one of the people will contact you, and then I get together and find out what you need to know from an engineering standpoint. No, I didn't know if that was Nancy or not.
Ted would-
You're the head of the engineer.
I'm the head of the engineer. Ted does all the work.
He does the work.
I just give him the assignments. He didn't even know he was coming today until we were ready to leave.
Well, he didn't want to be missed out on all this, I mean-
But it's a good thing he was here, because I wouldn't have even realized that we needed to serve you from a bolt, a pipe, yeah.
Okay, that's one of the-
That's almost true, I think, there wouldn't be much problem, I don't think, with tying that in, with us, we can write down the line, it's coming right up Dixie Road, right to the reservoir.
And our engineer would design from the Delaware line- And our engineer would, uh, design, uh, from the Delaware line, uh, on, you know, because it, it would be a relatively lengthy process. Uh, I don't know in Delaware what it would involve, but, of course, we have to go through the Maryland State Highway to be in the right-of-way, and, uh...
And we wouldn't be authorized
It's a bureaucratic process.
We wouldn't be authorized to put any water pipe in Maryland anyway.
No, that's what I mean, you bring it to the line and we'll take it from there, so.
And, um, you know, it, it, it looks, it looks doable, and it looks like something we would definitely be interested in, um, working with the city and stuff.
Okay.
With it, so, um, but I think we have to, yeah, that we have some more information about what you're looking for and what some of your requirements are. We just need to take that back and, and, uh, and take a look at it and see, um, really what it, you know, where we go from here and what it would be in terms of, um, uh, what kind of an agreement may have to be crafted and what kind, and what the cost, um, may be back to, to you all.
All right, that, that's basically what we're looking for, and so we can see like where you're coming from, and then we can sit down and then go over everything and, uh, look at everything and come up with something.
What's your timeline?
July one, two thousand fourteen. That's one thing we do. Assuming the board wants to take this route, um, they, the board hasn't voted yet to do this, um, but the, what they did vote to is to look at options, and United looks like a good option, you know, for us. And I'm sure the board would, uh, look, look to any cost savings for our people, our residents and business community as an incentive to go forward with this if it's, uh, financially in our favor.
Sure. Do you have, um, do you have a notification to, to cancel this agreement that would be in advance of July one that you're up against? A day, oh, six months, you mean?
Six months notice.
No, as soon as you guys can put something together, I think that what we would do is just, uh, once we got it on the handle and everything, then we would start some, some serious negotiations and come down and start working with our workshop and the commissioner and myself, and, uh, we'd work it out and, uh, and take some time, and then we'll, we'll try and put something together and then, uh, see where we go and when we finish up that.
This is a, since you've asked for a public record in our possession, this is a copy of a public record that explains our relationship with Artesian.
Okay.
So that gives you some perspective on, uh, on what, what the terms of the agreement with them are, you know, I mean, that's all the addenda and everything, and I'm sure if I were you, I'd want to see it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And it's a public record, so...
Because once they get, when the...
Thank you. This is our copy?
Yep.
Thank you.
I mean, if you, they're very helpful. Once things get more serious in the discussion, I would think Artesian's going to be stepping back from the initial agreements and, or...
Well, they, they, I think they, they already, they know, but we, we mentioned, you know, and they've been sitting right here in some meetings, so they, they're aware of what, what we're doing.
Yeah, and probably what they're trying to do is, they're using the Chester or Hocas and exchange rate because they have to displace, they're pumping it out of Delaware, but they have to displace, they have to supply that from another location, so they're buying it from Chester. So they can't control the Chester rate, but they can control the transmission.
I, um, I don't have a copy of their agreement with Chester Water Authority, but I remember talking to Joe DiNunzio way back when, uh, and, uh, I've already mentioned six million gallons a day from them. Whether that's changed, I don't know, but that was a chunk, chunk of water coming out of there.
They had it.
And that's, and they're taking pay. I don't know if that was their take, taking minimum take or not, I don't, I don't recall that from, long ago.
Yeah, there are agreements with Chester of, um, taking a significant change, you know, about three years ago or something like that, and they don't know what was online. Um, the, the most water, so I'm not sure.
Commissioner, actually, you've got a lot of questions you want to ask anybody, or?
Well, no, um, I'm just glad that we are, are finally seeking other options. I was, uh, you know, just kind of new to the board, I was kind of very concerned that we only had, uh, one basket, so to speak, with all the agenda, so... I'm pleased to, to know that it's not that far out of reach, um, and seeing that we may be able to, um, at least enter into some serious negotiations about, uh, about the option.
There you go.
I feel the same way, you know, we're forced to increase our water rates to the public, and we don't really want to do that, but we have no options at this point. So to hear what you have to say, and that line is right there, so that really looks very nice in my eyes. So I look forward to hearing back from you and, and seeing what type of agreement we could discuss with the rest of the board.
Okay, so as soon as you guys want to put something together and get back with us, or then we can...
We would be the, um, the best part of the time, I guess?
Right there, I'm in.
I have my email there.
Yeah.
The one that everyone can hear.
And, um, and then Ted will get some contact from KCI, KCI.
Okay, uh, what I'm going to do here, I'll wait till I hear something from you preliminarily, okay?
Uh-huh.
Or do you, do you think you want to talk to Ryan?
We're just going to need the elevation of the reservoir.
Okay, what, I'll have Ryan, I'll, I'll send an email to Ryan and have him contact you, because I have yourself, and, uh, that way...
Ryan Flickinger.
Yeah, Ryan Flickinger, uh, really good guy, he's, you know, very knowledgeable, he was involved in the design, everything. Full-fledged engineer, the whole work.
I've worked with...
Huh? Ryan, yeah, okay, good, that's, that's good.
Could I hear, uh, outside of the board's control, uh, it would be the state of Maryland right-of-way and Cecil County for change in the master plan?
The, uh, if we built a water line, we would stay in the state highway right-of-way. Uh, God forbid, we have to go to Pico. Uh, yeah, I, I hope there's some, the thing is, the challenge I can see here, I don't know how, the, of course, we know the right-of-way, we know the width on the plans and everything. I'm just hoping we don't have to go beyond the right-of-way into Pico territory, because, uh, Pico is very expensive, to say the, say the least.
And the Cecil County folks, do they have to actually change their master plan and...
We would, uh, once this thing starts coming to fruition, as Nancy tried to say, um, we would have to amend the, we would submit, uh, an amendment to the Cecil County Master Water and Sewer Plan for Elton, basically. That's usually not an issue.
It goes to MBE though, for their approval.
Yeah.
So Maryland Department of Environment has to approve it.
Right, so it's not the council, the commission of the county that's...
No, the county doesn't vote on it.
They, they do vote for the, because they have to vote to amend the plan.
Well, they would amend the plan, but they don't usually have any problems with our amendments.
No, they won't have a problem with that, I don't, well, given the current political environment.
I'm sorry, you're like, I don't know, I don't know.
Read the papers, like...
I don't know, hopefully they try and make some phone calls, but I don't, I hope that would be a problem.
No, I, I, right.
But the, the Maryland Department of Planning, are they involved?
I think it's just, um...
I, I don't think so.
MBE.
Okay.
Although, Maryland Department of Planning is now taking sort of a lead in a lot of stuff. And the state.
Hopefully, it'll stake us going.
But that, that would be on our side to do that, um, I don't, what do you do, at Denrick? Do they control you with respect to the capital improvements?
I don't think that would, yeah. I don't think that would impact us.
Now, I, I was going to ask though, do you know if Artesian had to do any kinds of filings as far as the transfer of water from Delaware into Maryland? Because they're going from the Delaware River Basin to the Chesapeake.
I, I don't know. I don't know that. I know they own, uh, I know they, uh, they own, actually own assets in Maryland that produce water wells.
Right.
And I don't know...
They have the Elton West Agreement with Cecil County
Right.
to provide water surrounding the town. Right, but the water that is coming into Red Hill Reservoir is really coming from Delaware, right?
Absolutely, yeah, right. I'm not sure how they, how they deal with that.
I have a map that shows, I think, it falls this way up here, but I'm not sure.
But I, we, when we deal with annual water quality, of course, uh, we have to include, uh, Artesian waters before Delaware, you know, water dollars, water towers.
Oh, right.
Because the federal government requires us to, and you too, to do an annual water quality report, and, uh, we have to include our water, reproduced, and it's from Delaware, you know, the Delaware. Uh, I mean, because it actually comes to us.
Now, with the Elton West Agreement, Artesian was to provide water to the areas surrounding north and west of Elton, um, and they were also going to supply sewer and take the sewer back to the Delaware side, which, um, really, there hasn't been a lot of activity lately, probably, because there's not a lot of building going on right now, um, with that.
Okay, Buzz, uh, Mayor Passo, I don't know if you have any closing remarks or anything you'd like to say, uh? He's still there?
Yeah.
I think he's still there, right?
Yeah, I, I, I sure am, and, uh, I've taken a bunch of notes, and I got a bunch of questions and stuff, and, uh, I'll, I'll, I'll convey them all to the citizens, but, uh, it's an interesting opportunity.
Are you our points of attack anymore?
And I, um, for, yeah.
Okay, Nancy, okay.
Yeah, and I really, um, I appreciate you, um, giving us the opportunity to take a look at it and see, you know, what, how this looks and, um, what we might be able to do in working with that.
Okay, we do appreciate it as well.
Very good.
All right.
Thank you.